Good morning and welcome to the December 6th, 2017 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. On the agenda this morning, commissioners will have an update from the Wichita-Sedgwick County Historical Museum, a post-annexation hearing with the City of Derby, a resolution regarding the opioid crisis, and an agreement with Via Christi for ambulance and medical transport services. Right now, I'd like to invite some public safety representatives to talk about an upcoming event beginning next week.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Dan Wagner, Sedgwick County Fire Department, and I've got Colonel Richard Powell and Dennis Mock from EMS. What we're here to talk about is we're getting ready to kick off our 23rd Annual Battle of the Badges. I'm sure you're all familiar with it, but just in case you're not and you're new to this, the Battle of the Badges is a friendly little competition between all the emergency services in Wichita and Sedgwick County to get blood donations during this time of year. This time of year, blood donations have a tendency to decline, so this little competition tries to encourage especially first-time donors to come out and donate blood. Since you've got such a good representation from the county for Battle of the Badges, we're here to maybe put a little pressure on the board and our senior administrative staff to come out and join us for Battle of the Badges. And if you're never given blood or a little afraid, this is your opportunity to be a first-time donor or a lifetime donor, whichever one you might be or might not be. So again, this is our kind of our little call-out to bring, ask you guys to come out, donate blood. The kickoff is going to be Monday, December 11th at 11 o'clock. I also, excuse me, I have Brendan Norton and Kelly Carpenter. What's that? I stand corrected, it is at 11:30, so it's a good deal. We are going to be having our T-shirts for those that donate blood, and this will also be your chance to vote, which we all like to do, for your favorite emergency services. The numbers are Fires won 12 times, Laws won 9, and EMS won last year. We want to keep on the trend of Fire being everybody's favorite. This is what they get for letting me talk. But anyhow, we do encourage everyone to come out, and we are encouraging first-time donors to come out and give blood. This is a hard time for the Red Cross to get blood donations because everybody's busy with the holidays. So at that, I'm going to step back, and if Colonel Powell or Dennis would like to visit with you, this is their opportunity.
Thank you. You know, since it was mentioned of voting, you know, we do have to remind certain segments of the public safety organizations that they're only allowed to vote one time. But this is the 23rd year, as was mentioned, and during that 23 years, we've had the ability over that 23 years to have 26,000 individual blood donations. 26,000 equates to 78,000 people that have received some type of value. Forever one, one blood donation that affects three different individuals, 78,000, that's a really large number, a really large number, and that number continues to grow on a regular basis, as was mentioned. Typically, again, in the holiday seasons, we all have a lot of things going on in our lives, and we forget about blood donations. So again, we would, we would certainly challenge those mentioned and your friends and your family if you have the opportunity to donate or never have before. Today's a good time to start thinking about it later on, starting next week, going through December 31. And again, it's a friendly competition, there's a few jabs and pokes taken every once in a while, but we're all following the same guiding light and see if we can move this program along. Jess, anything?
I'd just like to say that blood is very important to us and obviously those that we serve, and we would appreciate your support in donating blood and particularly voting for the defending champions this year.
Again, commissioners, we appreciate you giving us the time at the beginning of the, at the meeting to remind people how important it is to donate blood, and we do encourage those to come on out, participate. And again, the kickoff is 11:30 on next Monday and on the 11th, and we hope to see as many of you there as possible, and we will be sending out some invites for you.
All right, well, thank you for that announcement and information. You know, it's, it's great to have some good-natured competition to, the result is really beneficial to our community. So appreciate you guys getting behind this and encouraging this, and I'm totally, it doesn't hurt at all, right?
Not at all.
Okay, good. Well, then I might show up, so.
Fantastic.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And one final announcement, commissioners. As we move into the holiday season, be watching us on social media, Sedgwick County Government on Facebook and Twitter. We are going to be rolling out 12 tips for holiday safety beginning this afternoon and through the holiday season, so just some helpful safety reminders as we enjoy the season. With that, I'll let you start the meeting.
Okay, Kate, thank you for that introduction and appreciate everyone who's in the meeting today. We appreciate your attention to county business, and we're thankful for those who also are watching by way of television. But with that, at this time, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, December 6th, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invitation to be led by Reverend Titus James, North Heights Christian Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning, Commissioner Unruh, and the rest of the commissioners, God bless you. I'm honored to lead you in prayer this morning. Let us pray. Most glorious God, we're truly glad to bow in humble submission to thee in this holiday season. We thank you, dear God, for peace and freedom we have on our land today. We thank you, dear God, also for many opportunities for improving our lives that abound in our country. We give you thanks, oh God, also for the generosity of many people who give of their treasure and their goods in this year. We ask a special blessing of God upon the efforts of Operation Holiday as it serves so many in our county and community. We pray, God, for recovery and rebuilding for those who put in forth a wonderful effort following the hurricanes and floods and fires. But, oh God, yet we still need your help, for California is burning. I ask now, oh God, in my humble heart, that you will just let your mercy and grace shower on our land. Open our eyes, oh God, to see morality as it is. We need a more revival, oh God, for our nation. Please help, oh God, our love and forgiveness and fairness restore a true sense of national unity. Please give, oh God, the church and other faithful organizations the power to rise up this time in this day and bring an effective leadership to help in the service of our country through their missions and social healing efforts. We pray, oh God, that you would please, please, help our nation to overcome the theatrical and divisive governance we now have to cope under. Please, oh God, while scores are dying every day from opioid addiction and many others dying from gun violence, we ask, oh God, for resolutions in these issues. Help us, oh God, to be more alert to your command of our hearts to love and forgive and help each other. For God, we see more and more people now joining the ranks of those living in poverty, and that's a pain they need not endure in this country, but many, many more are finding themselves in their predicament. Our children are hungry, going to school, please help them, Lord, please. But yet, God, in the midst of all these struggles and trials, we still must praise you because we trust you to be the loving and supreme God that you are. You are God of love and a God of peace, and we worship and adore you. And I thank you, God, for the gift you gave us in your son, Jesus Christ. We are able and right now to celebrate his birth in this season, for truly he is the reason for this season. And, oh God, he was sent to the world to bring and establish peace and goodwill to all. Dear God, may your will be done. Let there be peace on earth, dear God, and may we, your children, do all we can in our efforts to work to bring about peace and goodwill to all. But, oh God, may it also be in our efforts to bring peace and goodwill for all. For God, we join as your children in our hearts to work for peace and goodwill by all. We pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Pastor James, thank you for being with us this morning. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Chairman Enrin.
Present. And next item.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we've had several people sign up to speak this morning. All of them have listed Tyson as the topic, and so we'll just ask these to take to the podium in the order that they signed up and would ask them to, each speaker to say your name, and remember that you have three minutes to speak. So first is Mike Fussell, I believe.
Fussell is the last name, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Gentlemen, commission members, first of all, I have a written statement and an attempt to stay brief and to the point, and within my three minutes, I'll just share that with you, and then I'll pass it to the clerk, and she can pass it on later on to you. First of all, I want to thank you for the time to come and share with you today. My name is Mike Fussell, and I am a retired manufacturing engineer with a major aircraft company here in town, and I probably should add to that happily retired. So I just want you to know that I live around Meridian 79th Street. Therefore, I believe I have a legitimate concern with the possibility that the Tyson Industries might be putting one of their plants less than three miles away from my home. Many other residents in this area have already contacted and spoke to you about some of our concerns, including smell, groundwater pollution, infrastructure wear, and reduced property values. These are all valid concerns, however, it is Tyson's history that I would like to discuss with you today. I have heard more than once that Tyson's coming to Sedgwick County depends upon what they ask for and how it benefit, and how the county benefits from it. These are good things. These are all, I respect that. It's a good business to operate that way. However, another part of doing business, however, is also knowing your partner's history. Based upon Tyson's track record, I would hope that the final decision that you make or whoever is going to make it is not one based strictly on dollars and cents. Regardless of what is promised, I don't feel Tyson can be trusted. A quick Google search of Tyson OSHA fines and the website GoodJobsFirst.org reveals numerous citations and fines for environmental violations, employment discrimination, workplace safety violations, and several other infractions resulting in over $75 million in penalties, making them one of the most penalized food producers in the country. These are some of the things I would ask you to think about when considering doing business with them. No matter what they promise you, based upon their history, the question is, can they be trusted? As with any decision you consider, your constituents will be watching. And trusting that rather than make a decision that might be politically expedient for your careers, you might make one that doesn't come back to haunt us as a county in future years. Since I've got a few seconds left, I want to put a little emphasis on how personal this is to me. Being a product of the 60s and the 70s growing up, I did something here a couple of weeks ago that I never thought I would ever do, had never participated in before, and that is that I was part of the protest downtown against Cedric, Tyson coming to Sedgwick County. I'm not part of that because I, I don't want to see some animals hurt, I don't, you know, I'm not, my environmental concerns are basically localized to my property. So I just want you to hear my time's up, so I thank you very much again, and I appreciate your time. I hope that you take all these things into consideration.
All right, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is David Baker.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's David Baker. I just wanted to talk briefly. My big concern with the Tyson plant is all the money and the financing and the tax abatement that'll go into encouraging them to come. I'm of the belief that these businesses ought to be operating on their own, and tax abatement, for example, I know we're going to require more police protection, and these are valuable services that I receive every, every day, every year, and I think most people in the county do. But Tyson will come in here and not have to pay for any of that, and I think that kind of business, they're going to be using those services. So one of two things will happen, we'll have to raise our taxes, or the police department will put additional pressure on them, which is going to affect us, and the same with the fire department. So I'm against using any kind of industrial revenue bonds, tax abatements, or anything. And if Tyson wants to come in here, I'm a believer that business ought to be able to do what they want to do. But if they want to come in here and put the plan up, and they have a business model that works, and I'm assuming that they do, they should be able to come in here and set the plan up, provide their own financing, and make the whole thing work, be a responsible member of the community, support the services that they are taking, you know, from our county and our community. And with that, I think we're all going to be a better community as a result of it. I like the idea of people coming in and building and, you know, getting more tax revenue and having jobs and all of those things, and I think they're important. But, you know, to have somebody come in and, and not pay for those services or those services go down, I think that's a bad situation. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Next speaker is Dana Bluebaum-Moral.
My name is Dana Bluebaum-Moral. I have returned to speak again in front of you four men who represent this beautiful, wonderful Sedgwick County. The concerns of everyone in and around this Sedgwick County, just, not just my immediate area, that this animal operation will bring into our county, not only with the slaughterhouse, but as well as the 400 to 300 chicken houses that's going to be providing that type of animal. That type of product is going to be producing every seven weeks of chickens that are going to be processed. Can you imagine what that will bring to our county? The litter that's going to be spread across our farm areas? The farmland can only take so much of that type of litter for so long. If you haven't been in around this county or any of the cities around here, like Hayesville, Clearwater, Derby, Park City, Viola, naming a few of these towns that surround in our county, they've all grown and prosperous in our, in our Sedgwick County. Also, we have farmers that are irrigating, pulling the supply of our water as well, but this is not our concern. My concern is we have dealt with the chemical plant there and the pollution that they had put into the ground. This also is a concern that Tyson would bring into our county. My husband and I have worked very hard for where we live now. I also had mentioned that we had retired from the city and moved out into the county, but also we ran a business. We ran a sewer and drain business, and I know what kind of stench that can be. Can you imagine what kind of stench they would produce from their products that they will be flushing into our ground and surrounding areas? I do not want this to lose our property value for, because we're depending on this for future, our future investment to take care of both of us in our later years. And there's also those people in the same type of situation. I also wanted to point out, too, that in this area, it's going to, it's going to affect our growth and the turnover in this, in this company, in the housing that's going to have to be provided, and the health that is going to have to be provided into these employees and their education and social service.
Mrs. Moral, can you wrap it up, your three minutes?
Yeah, and law enforcement and communication. I want you to take all that in consideration, and please, please reconsider your offers to Tyson. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Clint Moyer.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Clint Moyer. My wife and I have lived on the corner of 71st and 119th Streets since 1989, where we built a house and raised our three kids. We live in the same 160 acres that my wife's great-grandmother purchased in 1882. She built a two-story white frame farmhouse on the land in 1884. My wife always emphasizes that it was her great-grandmother who purchased the land and built the house and did it with her own money. My wife's great-grandfather was a land speculator, oil man, and farmer. My wife's grandfather was born in that farmhouse and worked the ground until he retired. My wife's father then farmed the ground until he turned it over to my son to farm. Even though both of my parents were born and raised on farms, I was raised as a, as a small-town city kid, Wellsville, Kansas. I've been too busy teaching school and playing army with the Kansas Army National Guard for the last 30 years, teaching school for 35 years, to be involved in the farming, but I did watch my son develop a love for farming by sitting on his grandpa's knee as soon as he could reach the steering wheel of his old Case tractor. I watched my son learn how to drill a straight line of wheat, how to run and fix a combine, how to, how to know when to rotate his crops, and all the other details of farming. My son's a fifth generation to farm that land. He now lives in that two-story white farmhouse with his wife and his two, and his two daughters, two little girls. I've heard and I've read over and over how each of you say you don't have any decisions to make right now, how you really have no control over what's going on with what's happening, how it's all in the hands of the Greater Wichita Partnership, and it's all in the hands of Tyson, how it might be years before you have a decision to make. Those statements simply are not accurate. I'd like to read from a letter that each of you, plus a few others in the room, signed on September 27th. "Our city and county leaders are excited at the prospect of bringing this wonderful opportunity to Wichita and Sedgwick County. We're ready to collaborate with you regarding this venture and leverage many of our important partnerships, including the shared city-county zoning and building regulations department to help provide excellent customer service every step of the way." Wichita and Sedgwick County, along with nearby partner counties, have the land, mass, transportation systems, and agriculture framework to support Tyson facilities and ancillary support industries to help the plant thrive. If not for this letter, I wouldn't be standing here right now. You see, the only reason I'm here today, the only reason hundreds of very fine people are stressed way beyond where they should be stressed, is because of this letter, and you guys can end this today. According to a November 29th article in the Wall Street Journal, Tyson CEO Tom Hayes said in a conference call to reporters, "I don't know how in touch the officials were with local sentiment and tongue and oxy in the surrounding area." Jackie McClasky, the Kansas Secretary of Agriculture, was quoted in the Kansas City Star on September 19th as saying, "The challenge we face is we were dependent on the local leadership to determine that this would be a good project for the area. It's disappointing to see that perhaps the community and local leadership were not on the same page." The exact same thing that Hayes and McClasky said is happening here today. I'm asking each of you, maybe only a few of you.
Mr. Moyer, your, your time is expired. Can you wrap it up?
I've got three more sentences.
Okay.
I'm asking each of you to write a letter to Tyson today, just like you did on September 27th, and tell them that you've been able to get in touch with a local sentiment, and you do not feel Tyson is the right way to grow Wichita, Clearwater, Hayesville, and Sedgwick County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. The next speaker, next speaker is Mr. Jeff Zogelman.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Zogelman. I live in rural Clearwater, Kansas. I live on the same road that I was born on. I've just got a couple of questions and a couple of statements. First question is, what is Sedgwick County, and to that the extent of the commissioners, prepared to do for the current landowners and property owners when our values are negatively impacted? This will happen, and possibly a collectively class action suit could be filed because there are over 200 homes within the three-mile radius of the proposed site. Second, how will Sedgwick County subsidize the small communities or townships that bear the brunt of this cost and burden, i.e. roads, infrastructure, and social services? Tyson, we use a massive amount of water. The huge distraction of the water amounts that we're talking about will possibly move the contaminated water that is under the OxyChem Vulcan system. How is the county prepared to mitigate that and keep that water from moving? And then how is the gray water going to be disposed of? The gray water is water that's used in the processing plant. This has to be sent through a municipality. Tyson has exhibited to the last 17 years they are not socially or environmentally responsible enough to handle this, as witnessed $75 million in penalties in the last 17 years, with the most recent one in the last 90 days levied in Monut, Missouri for an accidental release of a local waterway. December 1st, Worth Sparkman of Tyson spoke and said, "Our plants and feed mills are governed by the requirements of the Clean Air Act. We work to meet hard the environmental regulatory requirements," end quote. Working hard simply is not going to cut it here. Our land, our water, our children, and our children's childrens are at stake, and we and they deserve better. History shows it's cheaper and easier for them to pay the fine than to do the job right. I know the Greater Wichita Partnership is doing their due diligence and working hard on this issue, but what I'm asking you today, you know in your heart what's right, you know in your heart that this is not good for the community, you know in your heart this is not good for the people of your community. So I'm asking you today that someone will take a stand and simply write to Tyson that you will not give them any money, and they will not come to Sedgwick County. It's plain and simple. If you don't give them money, they won't come. So you do have the ability to make this happen or not happen. And lastly, I don't think any of you want to be the commission that is noted for you are the ones that brought chickens to Sedgwick County and made Wichita and/or Sedgwick County the chicken capital of Kansas. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. That's the end of those who've signed up to speak on the public agenda. Is there anyone else who has not spoken previously that wants to speak? Okay, then, we will close. Commissioner Ranzau.
I just want to say I appreciate everyone's comments here. I'm sorry how things got all rolled up and created all this consternation, and personally, I have grandparents who retired from a beefpacking plant and parents who worked at a beefpacking plant that used to be here in Wichita, so I was open to the idea of hearing from Tyson and seeing, just having all the answers addressed. I don't think we're going to get to that point. I think a particular site was put out, for whatever reason, that I don't know necessarily was a good site, and, you know, we have a lot of people that are opposed to it for that, and I can understand that if I lived in that area. We also have farmers who are very supportive of it, who haven't been able to have that voice and have voice and haven't had a discussion. Being said, I've always said all along that I'm not going to support incentives for them, and I think, I don't think this commission is. I think the people just need to know that I don't think they're going to be coming here. And more will be said later, but we got to tell these people that they're, you know, I'm not supportive. I don't think this commission is supportive of incentives. We can't just keep dragging this out if we know that they're not going to get incentives. If they want to come, like one gentleman said, they can come with incentives. It'd be very hard for us to stop, I think. But I'm disappointed in how things have transpired because I don't think we've been able to have a full dialogue because one area got focused on, which I don't know was a good location to begin with, but why that got focused on, we could talk about later. I think we've already addressed that. And so I have a wide ranging of opinions and thoughts on that. I'll just, so I see both sides of the issue, having family members who worked on beefpacking plants, but they're not going to come here. They're not going to get incentives, so for whatever that's worth.
I don't see anyone else wishing to speak or anyone from out here, and because this is such an emotional issue, among other things, I haven't shook my finger at you and said, "Please don't applaud." We really don't do that in county commission meeting, but for now, the discussion's over with for today. So thank you all for your interest and participation. With that, Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
New Business, Item A, 2017 Wichita-Sedgwick County Historical Museum Update to the Board of County Commissioners.
Good morning, and happy holidays, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. My name is Eric Cale. I'm the Director of the museum, and I have the privilege of leading the Wichita-Sedgwick County Historical Museum, which is one of America's leading museums of local history and traces its origin back over a century ago, just across the street in the old Sedgwick County courthouse. In Sedgwick County, we have a unique and exceptional history and also a museum to match. I'd like to extend our thanks to the Board of Commissioners and to the people of Sedgwick County for their investment, for the investment that they've made into the museum over the years. Operational support received has allowed the lights to stay on and the doors to stay open six days a week. I'm also glad to report that the new core exhibit of the people, by the people, for the people, created through a special one-time grant by the county, has been well-received by the public and is leading to new interests in civics and government. It also aligns with new teaching standards set by schools. 2017's been a good year for the museum. We've maintained a strong visitation, double that of 10 years ago. We've maintained a rigorous schedule of programs and special exhibits that now include activity we manage out in the Heritage Square, which adjoins the museum, the little urban pocket park there. As you may know, all of our activity is built around the museum's collection of nearly 100,000 artifacts important to our local history. We've been successful in hosting several new exhibits each year to enhance the museum's long-term and core exhibits, which occupy all four floors of the building. Our reach goes beyond those who visit the museum by way of service to researchers and publishers who depend on the museum for information and historic images. Our curator attends to hundreds of these inquiries every year. We're a very active place, supported by a staff, full-time equivalent, five-and-a-half staff members, also active volunteers numbering at about 100, which include 25 volunteer Board of Trustees, who meet every month to provide fiduciary guidance for the museum. On the horizon these next few years is the development of a new strategic plan and a focus on celebrating the City-County Sesquicentennial in just two years. For now, we're looking forward to carrying the mission forward in 2018 and invite everyone to visit the museum. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, too.
Well, Mr. Cale, thank you for that information and that update. We know that you, your staff, and volunteers are working hard to make this a real valuable asset to our community, and I'm fully convinced that it is. I think you have great exhibits, and it's educational and historical for those people who visit the museum. So I would just want to encourage you and hope you all continue, and thanks for the efforts you've made this morning to be here. I know that you're on a little bit of a tight timeframe, but thanks for being here this morning to give us that update.
Thank you all.
Commissioners, we need a motion to receive and file.
No move.
Second. Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enruh?
Aye.
And next item, please.
Item B, Post-Annexation Public Hearing, City of Derby, Annexation Ordinance Number 2213.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. What's in front of you today is the post-annexation hearing regarding the service plan for properties that the City of Derby annexed in 2014 through Ordinance Number 2213. I'll scroll through the map here, just to kind of orient you a little bit, running the mouse along what's K-15 Highway. There are a total of 17 different parcels and five tracks, so there's three that are showing here currently, and there's two more located further to the south. The 17 different parcels have 14 total owners. They all join, as you can see, the yellowish color on this map is where the city limits for the City of Derby are located, whereas the grayish color is the unincorporated area. But all of those properties adjoin the City of Derby's boundaries. There are 12 of those parcels that have residences on them, and I believe there are five total that are vacant. Their sizes range from .3 acres to 8.5 acres, the majority of them being between 1 to 5 acres. During the adoption of the ordinance on these properties, the City of Derby noted that they were within their annexation plan. These particular properties were, per Kansas statute annotated, 12/5/31. Three years after any annexation, the Board of County Commissioners is supposed to hold a public hearing where there's a finding or determination as to whether the terms of the service plan were fulfilled by the city or whether they were not. The statutes require that notice of this hearing be provided to the city and also to all the property owners who were annexed, and that's occurred. We sent a written notice after your November 8th meeting that set this public hearing. Just a few details on the actual service plan requirements. The City of Derby included public street maintenance, street signage, and that included some address changes. They changed the address of several of these properties when they came into the city. Police and fire protection, including medical first response, parks, library, city building, health, housing, and zoning code enforcement, trash service. I believe the city has a contract with Waste Connections that's a negotiated contract for all its residents. Ditch cleaning, culvert cleaning, and stream maintenance. And then, upon either request or petition of the property owners, they get local street improvements, water laterals, fire hydrants, and sewer laterals. Three years ago, the Board of County Commissioners determined the service plan was sufficient and consistent with the county's resolution on handling post-annexation matters. Pre-hearing questionnaires were sent to both the City of Derby and also to all of the property owners. We received responses from six property owners and also from the City of Derby. All of those are included in your backup materials. I did want to briefly, since there were six total responses from the property owners, just briefly give you a synopsis of what the responses included that was really substantive to this matter. There were four different responses that essentially had complaints about street maintenance. They either said it was poor, that the patching was done after the pre-hearing questionnaire was mailed out. There's also a reference to a large sinkhole at a culvert on McIntosh that took six months to fill in. I'm not sure if that was necessarily, if you see on the map here, McIntosh, some of it's in the annexed area, some of it isn't, and I'm not 100% sure if that was or wasn't. And it's possible that that person who complained about it would be able to clarify that more, or perhaps the city could. There was also a complaint about the address change, and that essentially applied to both the street signage, and I also, the bigger complaint that that person had was with first response. They complained that they would call for a first response and they didn't know their new address, and so they'd have to give them their old address, and they said, they complained about how that could lead to delays in times in terms of the response. There were, there was a comment, a positive comment on the building code enforcement. They said it was good. There was also some comments on ditch cleaning, where some, I believe there were actually five different responses on that that said either the ditch cleaning was poor, didn't occur, they hadn't ever seen it. One person, I believe, said that it had been mowed in August of 2017, but that was the only time they were aware of. There was, on the culvert cleaning, there were three people who responded that it hadn't been done or was not done very well, in their opinion. Those are the responses that we received that were substantive to the service plan. There were a bunch of comments about how folks wished they hadn't been annexed by the City of Derby. Of course, that's not your charge today. That was the City of Derby City Council's decision three years ago. Your charge under the statute is to review the service plan and decide whether the city has or hasn't met the service plan requirements. I mentioned that the City of Derby provided a pre-hearing questionnaire response. I'll do a very quick synopsis of that, but they do have staff here who may be able to address that in more detail, especially if you have questions on it. They, in particular, noted the number of calls they made on fire and rescue calls and medical response calls, police calls, and animal control calls. They include some details in that, the number of plumbing permits they pulled and completed the inspections on, street maintenance that they had done on McIntosh. I think they noted two different instances where they'd done street maintenance and repair on that street. And then, lastly, they noted that there were not any requests for petitions or requests for services that citizens could petition or request for, but they also did note that two folks lived close enough to a water line that they were able to connect without actually having to get special assessments charged and go through that. So it wasn't a formal request under the annexation plan, but they did get connected to city water. The, unless you have any questions for me, I'd recommend that you, if there are any ex parte disclosures to make, that you make any of those ex parte disclosures before the opening of the public hearings, so that the parties can have a chance to respond to those. It also suggests if there's any ex parte information that you would, that is instrumental in your decision-making process, you can disclose any of that as well. And then, open the public hearing and receive comments from the property owners in the city. And I stand for any questions. Other than that, I'd suggest you proceed.
All right. Thank you, Justin. Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, are there any comments or questions from Justin or any comments you want to make or any ex parte contacts that you'd like to disclose? I would say that I have not been contacted by anyone regarding this issue. Just read the backup material. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that this is in my district, and so I think I need to speak to it. But I am familiar with the area. I've been up and down the street numbers of times. I know some of the people named in the address list, but I've never spoken to any of them regarding this annexation, and certainly since this has been on our agenda, no one's contacted me through email or phone call or verbally, face-to-face in any way. So I have no ex parte communication to report, and I have some comments later once we get through the hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone else with a question or comment, so at this time, we will open the public hearing, and we'll ask those citizens who have an interest or comment to go to the podium and state your name and address, and if you would, if you could hold your remarks to three minutes, we'd appreciate that. Is there anyone that wants to speak regarding this issue? I don't see anyone rising to speak. I noticed that City of Derby officials are here. Would you like to take the podium and make a comment during this time?
If you have questions.
All right. If no one wants to speak, then we will close the public hearing and restrict the conversation to the bench. And Commissioners, are there any comment or question? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have read the backup material. I've read all of the letters from the folks that responded to the questionnaire. I've read the service plan, and I just want to say, generally speaking, if I was going to be very general, I think people generally don't want to be annexed, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's a decision that they would have the opportunity necessarily to control those decisions. This is really congruent to the City of Derby. It is, I would say, inside the City of Derby as much as I am. They receive services from the city. In fact, one of the comments about first responders, I want to just clarify, out of all the responses, and I didn't add this up, but there's a lot of responses that they've made over the period of time that this has been monitored, and the average response time is four minutes and nine seconds. To me, that's pretty good service in terms of public safety. And the issue of water supply, sewer supply and things like that, those are all available if that's what they wanted to do, but they would have to initiate that. So that, to me, is not a compelling issue. I would say that, as I've read all this material, I think that the City of Derby has substantially met their commitment to the service plan and to their constituents that are impacted by this annexation. So I would be pleased to make a motion that we would make the finding that the City of Derby has provided the services included within the service plan.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this. Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll say also that the service plan that Derby has done was good. It always is. I am, however, concerned by these responses from the citizens. Several responses talk about poor or nonexistent ditch or culvert cleaning, poor street maintenance. Some attempts to do some of these things right at the last minute before this hearing are very disconcerting. And I believe these comments presented to us by the citizens are very compelling. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comment? I don't see any commissioner asking to speak, so Commissioner Howell?
I just want to say one more thing. I do think that, we've sat on a number of these types of hearings in the last three years that I've been here, and I would say that out of all of the cases similar to this that have come before us, I think Derby, again, sets the standard in terms of what a service plan should look like. I want to just commend them once again for doing a great job on that. You really do address pretty much everything you can imagine related to city services. So I understand the issue of the ditch cleaning, but I can tell you, I've been in some of the other cities around Sedgwick County and noticed the ditches that other people in other city limits have, and I don't think there's anything that necessarily compels the city to make that their responsibility necessarily. I don't know if that's something that cities have to do. So I don't know that that alone is something that's a reason to really make that the reason why we would vote no on this today. So again, I continue to support the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comment or question? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enruh?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And the representatives from Derby, thank you for being here today. I think we're ready for the next agenda item.
Item C, Resolution to Declare the Opioid Crisis as a Public Nuisance.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor. What you have in front of you is a resolution that does two things. First, it declares the issue stemming from the current national opioid epidemic to constitute a public nuisance in Sedgwick County. Second, it authorizes and instructs Eric Ost, our County Counselor, to retain private counsel to initiate a lawsuit pursuant to such public nuisance against those in the chain of distribution for opioids. Essentially, this lawsuit would, the basis for this lawsuit would be a breach in the law by opioid distributors who are charged with monitoring the distribution of opioids from manufacturers to pharmacies and submitting to the DEA reports pertaining to suspicious orders. This is both a federal regulation and a state regulation that calls upon such distributors to do that. An example of a suspicious order would be a pharmacy order which exceeds 10% of the prior month's order. That would be a type of order that a distributor would need to report to the DEA so that the DEA may make a decision as to whether or not they need to go in and investigate this activity. To our knowledge, that has either not happened or very rarely happened. It would be a public nuisance theory of the case, which would allow the county to enter as a plaintiff in this case. The public nuisance would stem from increased costs to the county that include The public nuisance would stem from increased costs to the county that include a law enforcement and public safety relating to the opioid epidemic, increased medical care, additional therapeutic and prescription drug purchases, and other treatments for patients suffering from opioid-related conditions, counseling and rehabilitation services provided through com care, treatment to infants born with opioid-related medical conditions, and welfare for children whose parents suffer from such opioid-related issues. Those represent costs that the county has incurred and will continue to incur pursuant to the national opioid epidemic, and it's those costs that this lawsuit would seek to abate. With regard to nuisance in Kansas, our laws and our Supreme Court has made clear that the use of real or personal property in maintaining and carrying on violations of any law regulating controlled substances is statutorily defined as a public nuisance in Kansas. So looking at the case law, the regulations and laws in Kansas, it would appear that such a lawsuit would have merit. And that is the, that's the basis of the lawsuit. I can stand for questions.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions that you'd like to ask at this time? Commissioner Ranzau.
Well, I guess I have a few questions. I'm not sure you have the answer to these yet. I've been trying to get, I have concerns about what we're going to do here today, because I've been trying to get some data as far as the length of time that we're concerned about and data throughout the whole length of time. One of the biggest issues that keeps bringing up is, or the reason justification is that we have 99, basically 100 prescriptions per 100 people in Cedric County, which is over the national average.
Correct.
But I've asked to get some data. I'd like to have that data historically, and I'd like to have it compared to areas similar to this, because I think we're being compared to small counties, large counties, et cetera. I haven't been able to get that information. I've asked some information from, from our health guys here. I haven't been able to get information, but if, if, what is the right number? Do we know what the right number is?
We don't yet know what the right number is, and it's likely that a baseline number will be established through litigation if and when it kicks off.
But how could we establish the right number through litigation?
They will have access to records that we currently don't have access to that are maintained by the DEA and by the national distributors.
Well, I still, I understand they'll have access to data, but I guess that still doesn't help us in terms of what, I mean, because we're going to, I think somewhere in here we said that we either in this or in some of the other data that, you know, prescriptions are given out in a way that's not medically necessary. I mean, how are we going to determine what is medically necessary for our community? And I haven't been able to get, get an answer to this. I mean, I guess, you know, I came from the health profession, so, and one of my jobs, I worked with a doctor that was involved in work comp on both sides of the issue. So I understand the need for lawsuits when they're appropriate and taking care of people, but I've also seen the system abused, which drives up the cost of healthcare for all of us. And while we have an issue of opioids throughout the country, it's worse in some parts of the country than others. I mean, our biggest problem here is methamphetamines. There's been a variety of explanations as to why it's worse in other countries, other parts of the country still here. I've had people say it might be the prescription laws in some states, it might be Medicaid expansion is exacerbating the problem. Some people have said it's because one of the contributing factors is the states that have passed marijuana laws, you can get marijuana cheaper, so they're growing at less in foreign countries, so the price of heroin has come down because there's more of it, supply and demand, all sorts of things that contribute this. I guess I, I want to make sure, and now we're going to sue, when we were briefed, we said we were going to sue the distributors, not manufacturers, maybe we are now. We're not going to sue the doctors or the pharmacies, but the distributors, and I've been trying to find some nexus between their actions and harm that's, that's done here. I haven't been able, none's been given. I mean, there's been a hypothesis based upon the prescription rate. I, I, I think we're rushing into this. We can also initiate litigation without this proclamation. It was explained to us by issuing this proclamation, it will lower the standard we have to prove. We don't actually have to demonstrate someone in our community was actually harmed. That's problematic for me when the government wants to sue the private sector. I think we need to maintain a burden of proof, but I'm also, I just have lots of questions, and I haven't been able to get all my questions answered, all the data, any historical data for the time that we're doing this. You have to keep, I mean, and the biggest question is, what is the right number? Because, you know, there can be many causes of why our rate is higher than some. When you have an average, you know, I worked in a surgery arena. People from all around the state came to our area here and get prescriptions before they leave. That can be a contributing factor. We have, maybe we are attracting more people with chronic pain problems. I'll give you an example. I bet you if you did analysis of, of the prescriptions for mental health issues, you would see a much higher rate per capita here in Cedric County than all the other counties around here. Within the medical community, it's been a struggle of how do you limit opioid prescriptions but at the same time treat people with chronic pain and acute pain that actually need it? And so over the, over the period of years, there's been, that has changed. Now, we've had some physicians in this community that have misused it and abused it, and they went to prison for it, and that's appropriate. And some of the manufacturers have committed fraud, and if you commit fraud or misrepresent stuff and you get sued, that's appropriate. I want to make sure that since we are actively involved, going to be involved in a lawsuit, that I can somehow see a connection here. The argument is, if they would have reported, you know, suspicious things to the federal government, the federal government would have prevented this supposedly, I guess, but the federal government had the data. This is the same, but they'll say, well, there was lots of data. Well, this is the same federal government that searches all our phone calls and emails and keep track of that. They can keep track of this data. So, but the biggest thing is, you know, there's unintended consequences. I've seen as a result of lawsuits and litigation that we no longer have Vioxx or Darvocet. All medications have problems, but because those are no longer available, we have fewer solutions to treat people. So I, there's a point that I could get to where I could say we should sue these distributors, but I got to see some evidence that they're the ones causing this and hurting our community. And I need more data, and I'm disappointed that we're under a time crunch here evidently. So, and the biggest question is, what is the right number and how do we arrive at it? Because there's lots of reasons as to why some areas might have more or less, and we need to compare it to like, like communities. So one of two things I've seen from my medical practice is you can have legitimate lawsuits for damages that are, that are caused by the people who are being sued, and you can have ambulance chasing, so to speak, and people gaming the system. And I want, I want to be able to say, and have confidence that I know which one we're participating in, and I don't have enough evidence to make that decision right now. That's, that's where I'm at. So I'm hesitant to proceed. It'll pass anyway, but these are my concerns, and as we move forward, I'll continue to ask these questions, because I know that you need to have the right amount of legal protection without excessive amount, because that drives up costs and that hurts everybody, because now we're in an environment where some people with chronic pain are having difficulty getting pain, pain medications and controls and et cetera. And so it's just difficult. And so I guess I just, I need to keep working with Tim. I need to get some more information. We need to identify the timeframe that we're talking about. We need to see the data and, and move forward here. Now, I have some questions with respect to this, you know, the state may sue. If, if we sue and get a settlement or get money, whatever, then we would be precluded from gaining anything if the state also won. Is that correct?
That'd be correct. We wouldn't be permitted to recover.
Now, what if we lost this suit, but the state won theirs? Then what's?
I would imagine that, well, instead of trying to field that question, I, we do have representatives from local and national council here, and I would, I would ask if they had perhaps an answer to that, that question.
Just a question. I have to kind of know what the different options or scenarios could be in the future.
Would you state your name, please?
Absolutely. Mike Fuller from AkkuFol Law Group. I've met with you gentlemen in closed session. So to answer your question, Commissioner Razu, is that the county wouldn't be precluded, because if we didn't recover for the damages in our suit, you could recover it through the, excuse me, the Attorney General's suit. We've met with the Attorney General just yesterday and have offered to work with him if he decides to pursue this matter. And we're actually talking to other counties as well and looking to make a group effort, because it's not, you know, one county or the state against the industry. It's everybody looking for solutions to try to address this epidemic that's going on here in Cedric County.
Right. And I understand that there's, everyone wants to solve the problem, but I've, I've asked lots of questions, a lot of people, what is actually is causing the problem. There's been a lot of things hypothesized out there, some of which I mentioned, and I'm not saying those are the cause or not, but there's a lot of people looking into it. And so I've, in my mind, I have to have a reasonable belief and evidence that their actions are the cause of what's going on here, and I'm not quite there yet. I'll continue to ask some questions. I understand the legal theory behind everything, and I understand the motion involved and everything, but I also have seen both sides of this issue in a very real way, and those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is the same one I had yesterday afternoon when we were discussing the very last sentence on this. It says that our county counselor, Eric Yost, is authorized retaining outside counsel. Are we going to go out on some type of an RFI, RFP, sole source? What's the intent?
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, we put that in because that is consistent with our general practice here, that I'm the person that retains outside counsel generally, even though this is a much more public thing and, and something that the commission needed to discuss, but that's just a consistent practice with what we do. I can tell you, I don't want to be coy about what I'm going to do. When we obtain legal counsel, we are not obligated to do RFPs, and I can tell you that I'm going to hire the group that we've been working with all along. They have local counsel, the Prochaska firm, two of whose members are here today, and the gentleman who's at the podium. That's who, that's who I'm going to sign a free agreement with, so I don't want to play games with that. But that's, but that's why that's in that resolution. It's just consistent with what our county practice is, which is that I am the person who engages outside counsel.
I appreciate that. I think I discussed, I hope I did, with you after the KAC conference, that they indicated that there were several different litigants.
There are several different firms, but, but we need to distinguish between the firms that are trying to get the attorneys general to, and represent those various states, and those who are representing cities and counties. The Attorney General may wish to file his own lawsuit, and it can, for instance, the contingency fee on, for representing states is a little bit less than what it's going to be for cities and counties because of the dollar amount that's going to be involved. They can take a smaller percentage. Here, at least the firm that I'm probably going to enter into an agreement with, every single one of their deals has a 30% fee all across the country.
Okay. Well, honestly, I, I trust your judgment explicitly. I want to make sure that everybody understands that, but some questions came up when I was at the KAC conference, and I wanted to make sure that I clarified those.
I met with the Attorney General yesterday, and I've spoken with him on the phone about this. I wanted to make sure that he knew from the get-go what we were contemplating doing. I wanted to know if he had objection. I wanted, I wanted to make sure he understood that we were going to cooperate with him and share information with him. We are not going to be at cross purposes with the Attorney General at all, and hopefully we can actually help each other. So I, I think, I think we're going to work as a partnership with the Attorney General. I don't, I can't speak for all states, whether or not they were able to accomplish that, but we have a good relationship with the Attorney General, and I, I think it will be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Yost.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So I know nationally, this is a pattern. A lot of cities, counties, and even states are moving forward. And I saw just, I believe it was yesterday, or maybe it was Monday, but Clark County, Nevada, they, they signed on to a major lawsuit regarding opioids. The difference is, they had their district attorney file the lawsuit. So is that a pattern that we're seeing that we'll have county counselors, or do district attorneys do this? What's the difference between what we're doing versus like what Clark County, Nevada, is doing, home of Las Vegas?
There could be a number of factors in play there. First of all, not all counties separate their county counselor and district attorney function. So that district attorney in that particular county may be responsible for both civil and criminal matters. That county also may have decided to file the suit, bring in counsel later, or they may be foregoing private counsel. But my understanding is the trend is to go with private counsel.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank the gentlemen for coming in from the law firms and Eric Yost for bringing this to us, and Commissioner Howell for kind of starting this conversation about a month ago. I think this is a very important endeavor for us to support victims and our constituents. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of comments. I will probably make a motion here in just a moment. I want to just make a couple of comments. I, I've been studying this as I've had opportunity for about the last month, reading articles and, and trying to understand exactly what's going on. But this is, to other, this is something that's trending in Cedric County. I think the data speaks for itself. I, at least I feel like it's compelling, compelling that when you look at the data, I don't believe there's some, you know, suddenly legitimate need for these drugs that, you know, come in explosive use of these drugs because of surgeries or whatever. I think that what we're seeing right now is an addiction to, to drugs that I think is obviously happening across the entire nation. And, you know, just reading the numbers, it's very sobering. We've got a publication from county news just this week. They state in there that 64,000 people in the United States died last year. Just divide that out, that's 175 a day. That's from drug use. That's not just opioids, but that's all drug use. I think I saw on TV just yesterday, 91 per day from opioids. I don't, now, some of that may be, some of that may be intentional. Don't know the, you know, I don't know how to break that down, but I guess my point is, it is, those are big numbers. And, and even within our own resolution we're looking at today, they, I think the evidence that's stated in here, in my opinion, is compelling, that we've had a large increase. It doesn't seem to be explained. Having said that, I did spend some time talking to one of our drug experts here in town. I spent, and he's in the business of pharmaceutical drugs, and he represents some of that industry here. So I spent some time talking with him about it. I think we both agree that, you know, there is a legitimate use for these drugs. There, we, there are people who need them, and I don't want to, I don't want to penalize the designers or the manufacturers. Everyone's in it to do their part, and everyone has a legitimate need to make money in their business. But I think there is a moral aspect to this as well, and Congress has, has handed the responsibility of this monitoring and analysis, and if you will, reporting to the wholesale distributors. And what I think right now is between the manufacturers, the designers, the wholesale distributors, the sellers of the pharmaceutical, assuming the pharmacy part of this, and then of course, the users. The only one that actually really makes sense to really monitor this would be the wholesale distributors. And to the extent it's within, in the resolution, they've basically abrogated the responsibility. They have not done it, but they've been given that responsibility. Now, they may not want to do that, but it is technically their job. And so I think there's a, and the fact is, we've got something going on, and somehow we've got to get a handle on this, and so I think that this is a necessary act today to take this, to take this step. But having done that, I'm afraid that Commissioner Ranzau may be right, that there was going to be a reaction from everyone involved in, in the distribution of these drugs that may be unintended consequence. Nevertheless, I still think this is an important step. I don't want someone who has a legitimate need for pain medications to be deprived of something that could help them. So I'm compassionate and empathetic to that situation, but on the other hand, I don't want someone who doesn't have a need for that drug to have such easy availability to, such inexpensive drugs and frankly, a system of care, that I also would, although it's not named in, not named in the resolution, I think there's a missing party here, and that is insurance companies. There are some drugs out there that are much more controlled. Again, talking to one of my colleagues in the community, he makes the point that there are some, some of these drugs that have much, there's much less risk, and there's much more control in those drugs, but because they're more expensive, the insurance companies don't, don't funnel people towards those drugs. They funnel people toward the less drugs. They funnel people toward the less expensive drugs, which have much more risk. And so, there is another aspect of this that really hasn't been addressed in this resolution. But I want to make that point, that insurance companies do have a factor in this. And so, having said that, as we go forward here, whether we join this lawsuit or not, whether we pass this resolution or not, I think that this litigation is going to happen. The controls will be enforced going forward, and the consequences of that will be a better control on these drugs nationally. But the, the result of that will be a movement in our community towards illicit drugs. We know that's going to happen. And what this lawsuit would do would be provide money for treatment for people who are caught up in that aspect of moving towards illicit drugs. And so, we're going to see a wave nationally, and certainly within Sedgwick County, of a wave of need for money to deal with the treatment of people who are going to be caught up in the consequences of tightening these controls. Having said that, it's time to pass this. So, I would make a motion, if I can do this right. I make a motion that we would, we would approve the resolution to declare the opioid crisis as a public nuisance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
And we have a second. And Mr. Yost, does that satisfy the...
You're just adopting the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
We have a comment from Commissioner Renzo. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to be clear. I understand the opioid issue, and I have shared my commissioner's concerns that, you know, even though it's not as, as big an issue as it is in other parts of the country. But the, one of the central focuses here is that the prescription rate here is higher than the average. And we don't know what the right number is. We don't know why that is. And my commissioner can, we can hypothesize. All I'm saying is, we need to try and find out. We also need to understand that this is, any victims that may be in our county as a result, their actions or inactions, will not receive any money from this. Only the government and the attorneys will receive money. And as I said, I guess I have a little bit of a concern that we're, you know, the sole purpose of this resolution, as I was briefed, was to kind of change the standard of proof, so it's easier for us to prove this case. And I have a problem with making it easier for the government to sue the citizens. If we want to sue, let's do it without this proclamation, and let's have some more data. And maybe my fellow commissioners have more data than I do. I want to, we can cherry pick things here and there, and I understand what the issue is, but if it's a multifactorial, we got to, we just got to be careful, I think. And I'd like, I'd like to see some more data. I'd like to understand this data more instead of rushing into this. So, but we are where we are, and I'll continue to work with my commissioners as we move forward to ask these questions and make sure we, we try to get some more data and try to figure out. Because my biggest concern is to avoid the unintended consequences that, you know, we're just saying this rate is too high. And I don't know, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But if it is, I want to know why, so that we can fix the things that are causing them high, but not unintentionally cause the other ones. And so, I, anyway, that's where I'm at. And I don't want people to think that I'm not concerned about this issue, but I'm, I'm not convinced that this is the best way to approach it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone else asking to speak, but I would just want to give my perspective. I think that we have heard that this opioid crisis is of national concern. And in conversations with the sheriff of Sedgwick County, he said repeatedly that we have the problem here. It's significant, and it's not going to get less, it's going to get worse. And we need to take actions to address it. If information we have tells us that we are one of the highest users of any county in the United States, I think that's an indication that we need to take some action to move forward, to get this under control. And I realize that like many social issues, there's no one answer. There's, it's going to take a multifaceted approach, and this is one of them, to try to control the source of this and the overuse of it. So, I'm going to be supportive. But no one else is asking to speak, so at this time, Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Do we need public input at all before we vote?
I don't know that we need public input, but if you, if you would, if there's anyone here who'd like to speak, we'll allow that. Okay, I don't see anyone rising to speak, so we will continue with, with the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Renzo?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item D, an agreement for ambulance and medical transportation services between Sedgwick County EMS and Via Christi Hospitals Wichita, Inc., and Via Christi Hospital Wichita, St. Teresa's, Inc.
Commissioners, your EMS Deputy Director, Dennis Mock. We've had a longstanding beneficial partnership with Via Christi for over 40 years. Our two longest continuously serving EMS post locations are Via Christi properties. This particular agreement before you today formalizes as a part of the partnership, and we become the preferred provider for ground transport on emergency and non-emergency basis when their ground units are not available. This will help us to, in meeting the response criteria that are set forth in a recent inter-local agreement with the city of Wichita. And so, we would actually request that you approve the agreement and authorize the chair to sign.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any comment or questions? I know we have representatives here from Via Christi. Is there any comment that you particularly want to make? All right. Commissioner Renzo?
I just have a question. So, we're already providing these for them. Why do we have to, and we haven't had an agreement for a while, or we haven't ever had an agreement. Why do we need this now?
This formalizes the agreement in terms of the financing that goes with that and the timely billing on that. It also makes us a preferred provider. And if they call that, and with this agreement, then it doesn't count against the criteria that are set forth in the city-county agreement in terms of response time criteria that they've set forth on the one-hour time period.
Because it allows us 90 minutes then?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess I have a problem with that. I'm fine with giving them a good rate. I don't like the fact that we're lowering our standard of performance, especially considering the concerns of our colleagues over at the city of Wichita. And we're, you know, expanding our monopoly. I think I would encourage Via Christi to use this as much as they want, but use private sector as much as they want. I, it just, we continue to compete and monopolize this when there's some private sector options that should be available. And we, of course, increase the response time, which in my estimation decreases the service and is contrary to the concerns that our colleagues across the city express. So, I would much prefer that we just enter, just give them a good, good fee, fee schedule in exchange for the, you know, the cooperation we've had in the past. I think that'd be a much better way to go. We could accomplish the same thing. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to commend our EMS. I think they do an outstanding job. I appreciate their service. Let me ask you one question to address some of the concerns from Commissioner Renzo. These transports that we have are not emergent. Is that correct?
It will actually be both emergent and non-emergent transfers. For example, if critical trauma shows up by private car at the facility that is not a trauma facility, then we generally will make that move, because we are more immediately available than their ground unit. So, there are some that will be emergencies. There are those that will be non-emergencies as well.
But if it was an emergent, would we not do this in less than an hour rather than the 90 minutes?
The 90 minutes doesn't apply to the emergencies. No.
That's what I was trying to get at, is that we're not lowering the standard that we're providing our colleagues across the street.
No, same as the others.
When we have emergent transport, we do emergent transport.
Closest unit would take that, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else want to speak? I have a question. Well, I also appreciate our EMS system and the way that you all manage it. And I appreciate that we have great partners in the community, like Via Christi, who's willing to contract with us to kind of make things of certainty in, in times and in prices and in, and the quality of our service. So, I think this is reasonable business, and I'll be supportive of it. I don't think we have a motion at this time, do we? I don't see anyone else asking to speak. So, I'll move that we approve the agreement and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Renzo?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you for being here. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve consent agenda items. Echo through Sierra.
Move to approve. Echo through Sierra.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Renzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
And next item?
Legislative issues.
I don't see the councillor here, but I don't think, Will, do we have anything to report?
No, I mean, we slipped past our legislative agenda last week. The session will be starting about, here in about four weeks, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Next item, please.
Other?
Commissioners, do you have anything else to bring before the commission today? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last night, the KDHE had a meeting down in Hayesville regarding the groundwater contamination from the old American Dry Cleaners. It was very informative. We had members from our own environmental department, led by Susan Erlinwine, there to answer questions as well, and then employees from the city of Hayesville. But things are moving very quickly. In the last 64 days, they have laid over, what did I tell you, Commissioner Howell, last night?
24.
Yeah, yeah, over, yeah, over four, over four miles of linear feet of pipe already. So, they're making really quick moves to mitigate those problems down there. So, just want to thank KDHE and City Hayesville, and our own environmental department, and Susan especially, for all their help getting that terrible situation resolved.
Very good. Thanks, Commissioner. Well, I would just want to say that I was at the annual meeting of the National Association of Mental Illness last night. Dedicated group of people who have particular interest in that issue in our community, and they gave annual awards, and two of our former county employees were awarded for their service to the mental illness community, and that's Marilyn Cook and Jason Scheck. And so, I was pleased to be there and help them celebrate that. I don't see anyone else wishing to speak, Commissioners. We don't have an executive session or a fire district meeting, so I believe it's appropriate that we stand adjourned.